How's that?
How's that?
Okay, the time is five forty-eight. We call meet in order. Those here are myself, Eric, Chief, and Kathy. And this is for the changing of one of the warrant articles, the apparatus and equipment. And I don't know if you want to...
Basically, we're adding a sentence into the apparatus and equipment fund to allow us to make payments towards bonds or whatever, for additions, renovations to the fire station if we have one that's outstanding. There's no amount set, the commissioners, and we'd come up with an amount every year to add to a bond payment to help reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers every year. And it can depend on what the apparatus equipment fund how did revenues that year, but its plan protection of expenses, we could come up with a number that would have to be dependent upon every year for us. So that's the intent of the change.
I think one of the biggest reasons, we do take in a fair amount of money, as everybody knows. And it's a shame that we got money just sitting there when you can use it for other things. Well, if we do get in the fire station to reduce the cost of it, which I think would be great, but...
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
What's in the fund now?
I don't know the exact numbers, but 1.5 million.
1.5 million in the fund? In your next 10 years, your projections, if you looked at your projections for purchases such as large purchases within the fire district, what is the projection of the... What are we looking at in the next 10 years for purchases as far as... I know every so often we buy an ambulance, every so often we buy an engine or whatever. I know we bought the Quint, so we probably wouldn't be replacing that in 10 years. I know the heavy rescue isn't that old and hasn't been used that much. But what is the projection within the next 10 years to take funds out of that fund? Do you have that?
Yeah, so next year we have planned to purchase a new ambulance. And in 2025, we're planning to purchase another new engine.
Okay.
This current year, we have a new engine going through the district meeting. And other than that, those are the large purchases.
What is the dollar figures, Chief? I guess is what I'd ask. For the new ambulance next year, what is the dollar figures going to be coming out of that fund?
So, of course, we don't know for sure because we're just putting specs together now. But I suspect it'll be somewhere between around 280, I'm guessing.
Okay, so say 300,000 is a...
You could round up to 300,000.
Is a conservative, is a good figure.
Yep.
On an engine, what are we looking at? What are you looking at?
So this year in the budget, we have budgeted 811 for an engine, but it won't be that much. We went out to bid and we received the bids and we're going through them right now to come up with the final determination of what that number will be. It'll be, I suspect, about $100,000 less than that.
So between the two, if you use an estimate, say you use an estimate of $1.1 million between the ambulance and the engine within the next 10 years, is that a decent figure to use?
So this year, this year we're going to spend about $1 million because we're also buying new air packs this year. You have to buy those every 15 years.
Okay, and that's the 800 plus whatever the air packs are.
Yeah, the air packs are around 300. We shouldn't come under that because we're going to use the last day bid and the price is lower. So I'll come up with a final figure on that. I don't know what the exact number is right this second. The next year will be $300,000 for an ambulance. And then in 2025 will be, I'm going to guess about $800,000 for an engine. Other than that, it might be a pickup truck or a staff vehicle or something like that. Those are the only big things that are coming up. So when we're taking in about 430, 460,000 dollars a year in revenue, given those expenses and other... We also purchase, you know, our EMS supplies out of there, our rescue supplies and our fire equipment supplies out of there, given those on an escalating basis every year and what our revenue projections are, we should be fine. I'm guessing we should be able to contribute if and when we get a bond on a building or buildings, approximately $30,000 a year. Plus, we should be able to purchase the FFD out of that budget, or most of it, that would be, that would qualify to be purchased under there for new stations, as well. And still maintain a healthy bottom line where we wouldn't be... There'll be no problem with going in the gray.
How many calls are you expecting to do this year? Or I guess you...
We're averaging around 2,000 calls a year currently.
2,000?
About 1,500 of those calls are EMS in nature.
And how much of those are out of town people that you get in the...
Very few. Most of our... 92% of our EMS transports are local residents.
You get some from them from insurance, right?
Yeah, so we collect...
But that's on an honor system. They don't... Right?
That's the way we collect the information about the patient. We submit that information to our billing agency. Our billing agency bills everybody, mostly insurance companies, Medicare and Medicaid. Medicare really rules the roost on how we get paid.
You mean you make the most money from Medicare? What does that mean?
So Medicare sets how you get paid by... It's a standard rate depending upon the level of service that we provide. There's a basic life support rate, an advanced one life support rate, an advanced two life support rate, and then there's a special, like advanced transfer rate. Usually hospital, hospital rate gets pretty high. So depending upon the level of the patient, depends upon what our reimbursement is. And whatever Medicare sets as a rate, the insurance companies follow suit. And Medicaid doesn't pay as much as Medicare. That's more of a state-run program. So, but in general, we're going to collect between 430 and 460, maybe a little more, depending upon what they... Every year it changes on their little formulas on how we get paid.
430 or 460 dollars or your...
430,000 or 460,000 in collections.
I think it's been like that for the last couple of years.
Just the last few years.
Chief, with the LRGH and Concord Hospital starting to get together, is that going to give us more transports to Concord in the future? Whereas Franklin is not doing... They're not providing the services they used to provide through their emergency room?
So what happens with that is that we generally transport right to Concord most of the time, depending upon where we are, or to LRGH. We do like to take them to Franklin, but if the service that they require isn't there, we need to go to Concord or LRGH.
In regards to the fund, Paul, enlighten me on how and when, what time of the year that the commissioners would be making determination on what monies is going to be able to be applied towards a debt that is on a building or whatever you're going to apply the proceeds to? What time of the year would that be? And how would that affect taxation within or the setting of taxation within the district? To the two towns process?
Yeah, probably during, well, towards the end of the year.
Towards the end of the year?
Yeah. And before, yeah. Budget, you know, budget, when it comes time to budget things, to see.
But like...
So the way it would work is...
I just want to get a clear picture because like the towns apply unreserved fund balance at the, just when the tax setting dies, so they can offset the taxation. I'm wondering when the commissioners would be doing the same thing to offset... You talk about using funds throughout this, from this fund to offset taxation. What month would that be happening? And how would that affect taxation? Because your budget is going to be based... When you come to the voting body, legislative body, you have to vote. Your budget committee is bringing a number for the legislative body to vote on. And that number is basically put into the taxation of both towns to the equalized valuation. I'm trying to get a hold of the picture of when you would be applying those funds so that it offsets the taxation or what's being figured from the two towns for taxation.
So this is, since it's money from a fund, that action would have to take place at town meeting through a warrant article to withdraw money from the apparatus and equipment fund to go towards a bond payment that was due that year. So it's not that the commissioners could just willy-nilly take...
No, no, but it would be at the fire district or at the town meeting, correct?
Fire district, excuse me.
So it would be, so on every, on every warrant, there's going to be a warrant article specifically for what's going to be taken out to be applied towards bond payments for that year?
That's correct.
Yeah, because you know, if there's not... You wouldn't want to take out a certain amount every year if you didn't have enough in there.
No, exactly, and that's why I'm saying it's not... You're not setting up a, you're not setting up a protocol where X is being taken out to be applied to Y every year.
Yep.
You're making a determination, or that's what you presented to us, you're making a determination based from the governing body, which is the commissioners and the chief, what you're going to take out and apply towards the bond payment. I'm wondering when that is going to be applied. And you're saying it's going to be, it's going to be within the budget, but the money will be applied after the budget's approved, I take it, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it would have to be.
Has to be.
Because otherwise you have no idea what your budget is.
Right.
So we talked about this when I was the fire commissioner and it got shot down. Can you relive that for me? My memory is somewhat foggy.
So...
It seemed like...
I don't know. We never had this particular warrant article.
Oh, we didn't? And they came to that point, but we discussed it.
So when we first, when you were commissioner, the revenue we were collecting was much less. We were collecting in order of like 210, 215,000 dollars a year. So after I got my feet planted in here, figured out what was going on, Kathy and I sat down together to improve our process, our information collection process so that we could give the collection agency the best information so that we can improve our collection rates and our collection amounts. So we went from that 210, 215 up to 300 and something thousand and then now we're in the 430, 460,000 dollar range of collections. Part of that is our ambulance runs went up as well, but our collection rate went up. The percentage of collection rate went up as well. So it's a combination of things. So when we were first discussing it with your commissioner, we weren't making the amount of money in our ambulance revenue. We couldn't, we couldn't siphon off money and still be able to purchase what we had planned purchasing in our capital improvement plan. But I believe we can do that now.
Remember some rock was overturned in terms of how the collection agency was operating. They were just out of Massachusetts, I guess. But they also had, they also had some facility in New Hampshire, too, but we weren't making use of that. Other departments were, but we weren't in that chain. So that brought the...
So one of the things is when they sent out a bill to a patient, the two insurance agencies, if it had the Massachusetts address listed on it, we would get paid differently than if it had the New Hampshire office printed on it. So now it's all New Hampshire stuff. New Hampshire addresses, W's.
You also have Massachusetts, too, so you can collect it down there.
Yes. Well, we can collect statewide. It's just, mostly we're collecting from New Hampshire patients, New Hampshire residents, and mostly from Tilton and Northfield. Like I say, it's around 92% of our patient transports are Tilton, Northfield. So if you have a New Hampshire return address in the billing information for us or for the billing company, you do, the way the insurance laws are written right now, you do better. Because a lot of times, if it's an out-of-state address, the insurance company will send the resident the check instead of sending the check to the provider, which would be us. And then the resident theoretically has to turn around and send us a check for that amount. And a lot of times that doesn't happen. They just keep it.
That's without saving?
Even residents, even local residents.
Right.
It happens here.
And so if that happens, if somebody gets a check from the insurance company and they don't pay us, we chase them.
Oh, you do that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Even if they're a resident, because they did get paid. But if they're a resident that are, that's unable to pay, we'll write it off. Even if it's an out-of-town resident that's unable to pay, we have a process that they have to go through to prove to us that they can't pay. They can't avoid it. And at that point, we'll write it off. And we have to see their tax returns and everything else. So it's, it's pretty thorough.
I'd like to go on record that I'm not able to pay, all right?
You'll pay all right.
And I still find tall act to it, so there's a problem.
Paul, have you, as commissioners, have you had discussions on what the minimum you want in the fund at the end of the business year or at the end of the year when you've taken all the expenses out of the fund?
What do you mean, that particular one?
No, I'm saying any given year, you're saying it's going to vary on what you're going to be able to take out and pay. And I understand that because you don't, number one, you're not guaranteed revenue. Number two, you're not guaranteed on what you're going to have for expenses for supplies, so on and so forth, that given year. So does the commissioners have, and I'm just asking this as a question, do you have like a shelf or a base where you say, "We do not want this fund to go under X", say 100,000, 200,000, whatever that number is, that you don't ever want to see that fund drawn down to a number? Do you have something like that in mind? Or have you discussed anything like that?
I guess we've never really just... I mean, this is the first step we're going through.
I understand.
To get this, and we've never really, I guess we've never talked about a certain amount that should be in there. And you're right, maybe there should be a certain amount in there at times.
It's something like an actuary would figure out exactly based on your prior revenues and they would know on the percentage that has come up, what your revenues look like in the future, what your expenses look like.
I have a full spreadsheet on that.
He's got a, yeah.
That that 20-year spreadsheet?
Yes.
All right.
And I adjust that three to four times a year, the spreadsheet.
I mean, it's, you know, the items that would go into that would be such as the increase within the cost of supplies, you know, you know what they have gone up.
He's done that already, yeah, he's got that already.
So what would, do you have an idea, Chief? Then I guess I'd ask. An idea of what you'd put for a base shelf as far as...
So...
You'd never want to see the fund go after you've taken expenses out beyond below this amount?
I would hope it would never go below 50,000 after we've had all our expenses for the year. And then we would get, hopefully that year we'd get another 430, 450,000 to start building up for the following year.
Yeah.
But if you want a copy of the most recent spreadsheet, I can send it to you if you like, so you can look over it. It lays out what we anticipate for expenses for fire and equipment, fire equipment, apparatus, vehicles, rescue equipment, EMS equipment, billing services. All that is all laid out. What the projected increase in cost will be, what the projected increase in revenue are, what that will be. And those assumptions are all in the spreadsheet.
And the reason I mention that, Chief, is because the concern I have is you've got, you've got years where you've got a big hunt.
Yes.
Where you're making a big purchase, okay? Such as 2025. You're looking at another engine, it's an 800,000. And you can't just have the bottom line be 50 or 100,000 because you're going to be working up to have that money and because you're only getting 400,000 a year. So if you had 50 and you add the fourth, say 450 for the... You only have 500,000, you've got 800,000 dollar expense just in that one engine.
So the spreadsheet shows what expenses we're planning and what the bottom line is compared to revenue every year so that we make sure that when we got purchases coming up, like this year, we're spending about $1 million for an engine. And then we have 1.5 in there.
Yep.
So it's not going to be a problem.
No.
And that goes all the way down throughout the 20-year history of this spreadsheet.
But it's going to be, I guess, my concern is going to be a complicated number to come up with, to be staying ahead of it. It will be easy, and it's not always... And the reason I bring this up is because it's not always going to be the same, Chief. It's not always going to be the same commissioners, okay? And if somehow we don't have a game plan put together... I mean, you understand it now, Chief. If we don't have, if the commissioners don't put on the paper some type of a game plan or some kind of a formula that's going to be figured to be able to carry this out, my fear as a taxpayer is that we're going to get caught short one year where we're taking excess funds off of this apparatus and equipment fund to pay for something else. I 100% support it, but I have concerns that make sure that we don't short ourselves somewhere within, in the outlook of it. You see what I'm saying? That's a concern I have. It's very easy where you don't have a set, like every year, I guess you, what is it you said this year, 300,000? Is it breathing packs or something?
Air packs, yeah.
Air packs. That's not something we purchase every year, correct?
No, it's every 15 years.
Okay, so every 15 years. So that's a known variable through, Chief, but an unknown variable for the setting commissioners, correct?
Yep.
Unless you're discussing it with them. So, and I don't know how you put, Chief, I'll look at your spreadsheet, but I don't know how you put a formula together to put those different variables. There's got to be other things such as radios within the district that have a light shelf, I'm sure fire jackets or certain apparel. And that throughout the years, those different things hit at different years and it's a different cost factor that comes into that. And they don't get any cheaper, correct?
No, unless you get a grant for them.
You get a grant, but still, they don't get any cheaper.
That's correct.
They're still, the grant maybe offsets what the increase is, but it's still X amount that's got to come out of the fund. And that's the only concern I have. I want to make sure that we do have some kind of a written protocol on how we're going to address it because it's awfully easy to say, "Well", someone looks at the number and you've got $700,000 in there. Well, yet you've got two years, in two years you're going to have a, you know, the following year you're taking $1 million out. So in reality, if you put 450,000, you only had a million, million one hundred and fifty thousand.
I agree with you on having a policy on maintaining whatever it is. But we currently, really, we have a policy currently that says how much we should keep in our assigned fund balance.
Yep.
And...
But that's not totally separate.
But it's still a vote of the district. Even if we have the policy, the voters at the district meeting can break that policy.
Exactly. But if you have a good protocol put in place, written protocol put in place, Chief, it'll educate the legislative body that if someone makes a motion from the floor to take a different amount out than is being proposed, why that's a bad idea. Do you see what I'm saying?
Oh, yes.
Because, like I said, some people, they can sit there, the number could be 700, 800, 900, a big number, like this year, a million five. And they can sit there and say, "Wow, shoot, we can take, you know, we can take a third of that. We can take 500,000 applied to some payment out here." But you can't because you've got more than $1 million coming, you've got $1 million coming up this year and you're going to be to nothing. So that's a concern I have. You're opening it up to the legislative body that's going to take a vote every year on a warrant article on taking out said funds from that apparatus and equipment fund. And we need a good written protocol on this is the number and this is why the number. Because here, you can show you right on the spreadsheet, we've got this and this and this in the future years. So we can't increase that number. Even though we've got a lot of money in here, we can't increase it because if we do, we're going to short ourselves.
I understand, I agree with you.
Chief, one way to work on a protocol that would make it a little bit more easy to look at every year would be to include not only the apparatus, which you've got on a 20-year spreadsheet, but you've got equipment. So you've got air packs that change every 15 years. That number should be put in there. And anything else that's predictable that you're going to have to turn over, you could have that figure in there. But I remember that there were times when we may have bought a Jaws Alive because it's the newest and greatest and we already had one that we, that we got on a grant a few years earlier and we only had to spend a little bit of money for it. But now we get the brand-new one and we ended up buying that one, too. So it's hard to be exacting, but you could, it's apparatus and equipment fund. You could, you could work in these other numbers as well on that spreadsheet.
And I pretty much have. The thing with the Jaws, that was a technology change where the original Jaws purchased with the grant or whatever it was, they're not, they weren't strong enough to cut through the metal that the manufacturers are using now. So we had to buy a different set that was strong enough to cut through that stuff.
Right.
So the old Jaws worked fine, but they didn't work on what we needed them to work on.
Right.
So they became essentially almost useless, yeah.
Just to enter Scott's earlier statement or something, on this projection, in 2026, that fund balance dips to about $68,000 based on what was presented. This, I just dug my notes and this is from October. You know, in 2021 it dipped down to just under 200,000, so... But the flip side, like you just said, the magic word, grant, you know? And sometimes the chief applies for a grant and they look, and he has to provide how much money we have in the bank. And guess what? Now the fact that we had, you know, 1.5 million, although that may hold us back from a grant.
Yep. No, there's pros and cons.
So now it's strategic, okay? Now do you go for these grants, you know, when our balance, when that fund balance is low, so they don't see that we have?
And the only reason I'm saying that, it scares me as a voter, whenever you go, if you don't have all of the documentation in front of you and all the information in front of you to educate the voter, there can be a vote that can be harmful, very easy, from the floor. Because anything, once an article, once a warrant article is opened on the floor, Because anything, once an article, once a warrant article's opened on the floor, it can be amended in any fashion. And we have to be cautious, we have to be cautious of that, but also be uh mindful that it is the taxpayer's money, in all fairness. I know it's come through ambulance revenues and through the work of the men, but it's subsidized by the taxpayer of the two times.
It's absolutely the taxpayer's money, and, and ultimately, they, they vote as to what they wanna do with it, but it's act, it's up to us, the leaders of the fire district, to educate them what are the consequences that they go against to what our recommendations are.
And that's why I'm just playing the devil's advocate on how, if you thought through some of the future things. I know you've stated, you just started Paul, and like I said, I support it. I supported the apparatus and equipment fund when it was brought over, 'cause they were using it in Belmont. We started years ago, uh, just because, look at our, look at the equipment compared to surrounding towns.
Yeah, we got some of the best equipment, ah, well.
Yeah, well, we've got, we've got quality equipment, and it's paid for.
And it's.
And we're not having a, uh, we're not having a discussion every year trying to get a piece of equipment through a bond item, a bond article, that we've gotta get a two-thirds vote. Uh, so that part of it, it is, and, but on the flip side of it, we have to be mindful, it is the taxpayer's dollars, and we have to be, educate them on that we can't take too much out of it, it can offset, but it can't take to the point where we harm, put the district in harm's way for future purchases.
I agree with that.
Now, I know that Kevin is not a commissioner right now, but he's on the budget committee, and I'd like to get the okay to be able to ask him what he feels about this measure.
If you're asleep. I have no authorization to speak on behalf of the budget.
Yeah, but you can, you can get it from a commissioner, right?
No, he can only speak for himself.
I can speak for myself, I cannot speak on behalf of or as a member of the budget.
I do.
So if you wanna know what I think, I'll tell you.
Go right ahead.
I think it's a good idea, and I like the way it's written. I, I, looking down the road, when it comes time to have that fire station, and I'll tell you what, I think we're closer than we've ever been. That fire station committee that I sit on, I think it's done a really good job, sat in those committees before. This always seems to be some dissent, some tension in all these committees. There isn't a thump of contention in that committee. Harmony in the world, we all get along, we all speak, we all listen, we map things around. I really think we're gonna come to something that's gonna fly. But what's gonna make a huge difference when that vote comes is how much money we're borrowing. I don't borrow money, I save money. The more you can save, so that you can go to the public and say, oh, but we do, we listen to you, we saved this money. And yeah, the project costs this much, but we're borrowing money this much. And I think that, I don't think that thirty thousand dollars a year out of that fund is gonna impress many people when you're talking about, potentially for a multi-million dollar loan. How much of a payment does thirty grand make on three million bucks? Yet if you, I mean, that, that document, it shows proposed purchases over time, it's just that, it's proposed. It's not concrete, where I've spent an eight hundred thousand on a, on this. Potentially spending eight hundred thousand this year, yet if you look at this in twenty twenty-five, it shows another engine for eight hundred thousand. And if you're spending eight hundred this year, you know that in coming, in twenty twenty-five, that engine is not gonna be eight hundred thousand. So.
So, oh, sorry, oh, sorry. The, uh, this is an older version, so the projected expense for that engine this year was eight hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. It's gonna be in the seven hundred thousand, closer to seven hundred than eight hundred. Um, in twenty twenty-five, that expense is gonna go up to one million dollars, basically. I doubt it'll be that, because when I put this together, I anticipate, I, I put a formula in that says that things are gonna increase more than they probably will, and our revenue is gonna be less than what it probably will. So I'm conservative on both sides, so to make sure that this stays. So when we spend seven hundred instead of eight and a half, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar net there that stays in the fund. Um, and I, I'm just trying to be a good fiduciary witness fund, I think it's one of the best things that we have here. And so I'm very conservative on both sides. When I put this together, to make sure that the fund never is really in ever, any jeopardy at any point, unless, if, if you go against my recommendations of what my proposed budget is, when I do it, if you decide that, the, the district voters decide that they wanna take more out of it, then there's gonna be some consequences down the line in this.
They could.
They could be, yeah.
I mean, the key, as always, is to regulate this spending. Regulate, regulate, regulate. Currency is not gonna be here forever, but I mean, that, that happens, you should have a different shield.
Well, I'm gonna give this one.
Absolutely, a lot of work there. So, um, like I said, I think it's a good idea, I do not like the way it's written. I, I personally rather see it as a.
An exact amount?
Cut in by percentage, not a dollar, percentage.
Percentage of what's currently in the fund, or percentage of what?
Current, the percentage of the current year's revenue. And you regulate your spending, other things.
That, that might be less than thirty thousand, depending upon what that percentage is, it might be more. The, the gist of the, the way the article is written is that, say it is thirty thousand, just for whatever reason it is, the bond payment for that year is gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, instead of being two fifty, it's really gonna be two twenty that's gonna be placed on the taxpayers. That's gonna reduce their payment that year on, for, in the tax rate, because of the bond, instead of two fifty, they're really only paying two twenty on it. Um, that's the reason, the way it's written, why it is, and not, it also keeps the fund solvent without putting a percentage on it, because we've, um, percentages can get you in trouble if you stick to the percentage and it's not, your revenue doesn't follow suit. If you stick it so that the commissioners and the fire chief together sit down, and the budget committee, whoever's gonna sit down together, this, this is what we have to spend next year, this is what we have, this is what our projected revenue is, this is our net, and this is where our expenses are going down, this is, that, we can come to a number and say, this is the number that we can take out of it and comfortably put it towards a bond payment, without putting anything in jeopardy. That's the way it's written, that's why it's written the way it is. Whereas if you're stuck to a percentage, you're stuck to a percentage, and that may uh jeopardize it in the future because of the percentage, whereas the commissioners, the budget committee, and the fire chief together, they all get together and say, yep, these are our expenses, this is what we have, this is what we think we're getting coming in, we know we can comfortably put this towards a bond payment. I know it's not concrete, but it's, the intent is concrete enough that people will expect it. And if everybody agrees that this is a safe amount, I don't see why that's a problem. And then there's other things that we're doing as well, as a fire, as a fire district, to help reduce the cost of bond payments. Um, the tower fund is part of that. We're putting money away every year uh, towards a bond payment or the, uh, land, building and land fund. We've been trying to put money away every year that we haven't been doing since. So all those things together, we're, we're trying to collect money to, um, be smart about it. Save, we're trying to save money and trying to help reduce costs at the same time. 'Cause the longer we wait on the building or buildings, they're just gonna get more expensive. And um, as much as you can to try and shrink it, the building down, our, our space needs aren't gonna get any smaller than they are now. So.
The, the other thing is, is part of the cost of the fire, well, within ten percent of that cost is because we have to custom build that thing to fit into the current fire, main fire station. In the future, if we have a new fire station, you might be able to take some of our savings and apply it towards that payment. You know, I mean.
Yeah, hopefully that next engine will have to have custom made to quite the extent that this one is.
Just to throw a curve into this whole thing, I heard the other day that Union Sandborn might be, they're looking at right now, one of the options is to, is to get out of Union Sandborn and, and build onto Southwood School, and, and that, that would be one solution. And if you do that, now you've got this property that's available for usage, and it might be a good place for a fire department, and it might be closer to the sweet spot for both communities to buy into a lot easier. And on top of it, you could sell the property on Park Street. It'd be good for people who want access to the highway really easy. Just to talk, just to come up with work a little bit.
I'm aware of, that's one of the things at the school that I'm still.
Yeah, it's worth looking at, that kind of thing. Um, I think you guys are really close to maybe have your minds on this whole thing, and I got dinner waiting for me, so. But thank you for taking the time, and.
What's for dinner?
Having enough chairs out here for everybody to sit.
No, he's cooking, you don't wanna go.
Yeah.
Call the fire department?
Yeah, yeah, call the fire department.
Colonel Ward.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave too. I, I support it, I mean, I, I think that there's gonna have, you're gonna have to work out some bumps and humps and that. Overall, I think it is a good, whenever you give, you know, the foolish. In this environment, it's crazy to have a bunch of money set in there when you're not making any interest on it. It's one thing if we're making good interest in the bank, but of course, they're not paying anything. There's nothing you can keep in the bank that is paying the interest. I think on Kevin's floor, a figure of three, three million, I think the payment on that, probably on a thirty-year bond, would probably be, what, a hundred and fifty thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, a year? Oh, no, I, I think that's roughly, probably would be a hundred and fifty thousand.
And all the interest rates, so it would be twos percent.
Yeah, the twos, if you use an interest rate, conservative interest rate, say of three percent, uh, I think you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand a year for a thirty-year bond, if you had a thirty-year bond on that.
Why would you do thirty years?
Well, I'm just saying.
I don't think you can.
Just rule of thumb, I wouldn't do thirty years, but I'm just saying, to get some kind of a ballpark number.
Twenty-five.
You know, a ballpark number you're looking at, it's easy on the thirty-year, you just divide the number in half, and so. Three million, you're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand. It's just an easy, come up with a number. It's, there's never gonna be a, a, the perfect solution, but at some point, it gets to a point where you're gonna make a decision, they can't be working out of Center Street Station forever. We've, you know, I've been to many meetings over the years, going back to when we were within one vote, two votes. The one vote of putting an addition on Park Street Station failed, because they brought two different funding mechanisms forward, they should have never done that. Whenever you divide the public here, you come with one option, and you, the best option, and you stay with it. And you present that as such. They brought two different funding options, one to pay for in one year, and one to pay for in five years. And it failed by one vote. And then once it failed, then it failed big time the second, when it went to financing.
Yep.
So it's uh, it's not easy, and I know what you guys are up against, it's not easy, but I do think it's right, you're on the right path as far as uh, having whatever you can take out of this fund to offset the payments. And I think that'll, as you stated, it'll vary from year to year, depending on revenue, depending on what you have for expenses. That's my two cents, Richard. Whatever it's worth.
But, you got anything else, Kevin? You got anything? So, I vote on it, I guess?
Good night, everyone.
I do, I do the talk to you. I do the talk to you, that's all.
You need the talk, don't you?
That's all.
So we have the vote on it?
Yeah, it's a public vote.
Okay. Yeah. I guess that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, the time is six thirty-three. Make a motion to adjourn, all of us in here.